Okay, on line.
Yes, yes. I'd like to call to order the Isabel County Board of Commissioners. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, man, Clark, roll call.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Jowzinski.
Here.
Commissioner Engler.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner Swainy.
Here.
Commissioner Hope.
Here.
All present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up, we have approval of the agenda. We have general public comments for agenda items only. Uh, we have no presentation, special reports. We have no appointments to boards and commission. We'll have the consent agenda. We will have. It's just can't leave. Oh. I got it. Thank you. We have committee reports. Uh, let me see, we have thirteen items. Have no intergovernmental affairs. We have the administrators' controllers' report. We have unfinished business. We will be going into closed sessions. Or discussions with our attorney. At this time, if you would, the board would like, we can move general public comment up to before that. Does everybody agree we doing that? Any objections? So after new business, we will do general public comments. And then we'll, we'll have our announcements. And then we'll have an adjournment. So I'll take a motion to approve that as. I'll move that we adopt the amended agenda.
Support.
Been moved by Jowzinski, supported by Moreno. All favor signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda. Okay, next up, uh, we'll have general public comment on agenda items only. Uh, please state your name and limit your comments for three minutes. Is there anybody?
Agenda item only.
Hour later.
Later. Yours is off agenda, correct? Okay, agenda items only.
Yeah, we've moved that up before because it will be in closed-door session. So we moved that up so before we kick everybody out, you'll have a chance. So, um, is there anybody online? So at this time, I'll close the general public comment on agenda items only. And there will be an opportunity towards the end of the meeting to have a comment. Okay, we have no spec- presentations and special reports. No appointment to boards and commissions. And we have the consent agenda. And I think I will start with Commissioner Moreno. You want to make that motion, please?
Um, yeah, I'd like to move to approve and place on file January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Support.
Moved by Moreno, supported by Jowzinski. Is there any more discussion? Uh, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move right into committee reports. Com- Commissioner Campbell, you take that, please?
Ratifying place on file. The July fourth, twenty twenty-five invoice list in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three fifty-eight cents. The July eleventh, twenty twenty-five invoice list in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixteen and eighty-eight cents. The July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five invoice list in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. The July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five invoice list in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine and eighty-six cents. And the adjustments list dated July tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Support.
It's been moved by Campbell, moved by Swainy, yes, okay. Yeah, that's who you are. Um, Administrator Smith, you want to take the first one?
On the July fourth, two thousand twenty-five invoice, two hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars, fifty-eight cents. Out of that, a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-two cents was out of the general fund. This list was sent out previously to all the board of commissioners for review and has been reviewed at the finance committee slash committee as a whole. Some of the larger items that are over five thousand dollars on this top sheet is sixteen thousand, three thirty-five, fifty-five for monthly medical examiner fees. We've got a couple, State of Michigan transmittals from the clerk and register deeds. We've got Wellpath LLC of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, fifty-four cents for the monthly medical service contract from the sheriff's department. And then Gordon's Food Service and then supervised care from the childcare fund.
Any question on that list? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the July eleventh.
July eleventh invoice list, and this total is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. The general fund portion of that is forty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Port the items out of this one would be five thousand, nine sixty-one and fifty-four cents to the biweekly animal control contract. We have one for STAR Excavated for six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars for drain maintenance. And then KCI from equalization of fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, sixty-five cents for the summer tax assessment mailing. And then the large one is Tech Eighty-four Incorporated for a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the whole body scanning system for the correctional facility.
Questions? Okay, seeing no questions, let's move to the July eighteenth list.
July eighteenth list, total invoices, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, fifty-six dollars, fifty cents. The general fund portion is a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents. The large items out of this one, Middle Michigan Development for its fourth quarter appropriations of eleven thousand, three ninety-five. Community Mental Health for fifty-four thousand, seventy-five for fourth quarter appropriations. And then we also have treasurer, uh, large treasurer, uh, invoices that went out, uh, couple for quarter, the penal fines distributions and tax sale proceeds to various libraries.
Okay, any questions? Yes.
So I did bring this up at committee. If you look at the background bills on page one of eighteen, very top, we have Millbrook Water Supply, uh, various departments paying for, uh, water. And I, I think, uh, our director of finance, when I brought this up and asked why, uh, we have office supplies, but we have two that seem to be either a mistake or really unusual. One was to jury fees and the other was to professional services. And I thought those really stick out like a sore thumb. And I think I don't remember the exact response, but what I interpreted it is it's because it's always been done that way. But if you draw your attention back to the previous invoice list, starting on page two, and I think there's like six or seven pages, you'll see the jury fees with individuals listed. And I think that's probably correct. It's in a contractual, uh, serious line item. But how does jury fees for wa- a bottle of water of a hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents fit in? Or under professional services, just down a little bit more, there's a thirteen dollars. Now, this doesn't amount to a whole lot, but we do have, uh, guidance by the Department of Treasury on a uniform, voting system that I think we need to follow. And I think those are mistakes and I understand that we'll be addressing this issue in the future. So I'll, I'll wait to that. But it just seems, I can't imagine that there's not questions on the part of the county board. When you see six or seven pages of jury fees, payment to individuals, and then you find that same account jury fees for bottled water. I think we're, we're making some simple mistakes that easy to rectify. I don't think there's anything evil behind it, but we should follow the charitable accounts. And if we need to get some additional training internally so that when these things come up, they can get corrected going forward. That's how I learned in my forty years of county government, as the department head or, uh, executive of nonprofits. I, uh, you know, I think I, I know the state and federal statutes pretty well. But I just want to throw that out. I'm going to vote to approve it, but I think that it's incorrectly quoted.
Okay. Questions, comment? Then I know we got a session coming up to going all into the legal and the counting on that, so.
Is your mic on? I'm not hearing you, other than.
Yes.
Usually don't complain when you can't hear me, so it's.
I know, I'm, I'm usually, you know.
Okay, better?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll speak, I'll try to speak up, so. Okay, uh, let's move on to the July twenty-fifth.
On the July twenty-fifth invoice list, it's two, three hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, eighty-six cents. General fund portion, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, eighty-nine cents. Large items on this one, without going through the whole list, is we've got advanced benefit solutions for international and ninety-day prescriptions of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, fifty-two cents. Preston Community Services for equalization contract of nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. And then another one for advanced benefit solutions of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-four cents.
Questions? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the July tenth adjustment list.
Actually, we have the July tenth adjustment list. Again, this is a list that's presented to show you some of the invoices that were paid early to avoid late fees or to get early discounts. And it also includes a, uh, couple of mistakes that were made that were corrected. And it will show up on this one right here. So we have, um, two of them that were changed to fix entry error or math error, which was literally, you know, a dollar, dollar twenty-five. And then, um, your typical ones that this went to was Gordon Food Service, uh, a couple of True Green and City Mount Pleasant and DTE Energy.
Okay, any questions on that or questions on the whole? Um, seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Moreno.
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yeah.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Jowzinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Engler.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Hope, I'll take that, next one.
Sure. Uh, item two is Isabel County Opiate Advisory Committee Bylaws. Motion reads, move to approve that Isabel County Opiate Advisory Committee Bylaws as presented and authorize a board chairperson and county clerk to sign the same.
Support. Moreno.
Been moved by Hope, supported by Moreno, uh, discussion.
So in two thousand twenty-one, the county elected to join the nationwide settlement agreements to resolve all the opiate, uh, litigation brought by states and local government units against pharmaceutical manufacturers, distributors and pharmacies. Uh, we've got, uh, a couple installments from that. We will get installments yearly continuing for, I believe, eighteen years. The plan is to park the money with our treasure and, um, have that available and then have a spendable that we can, uh, draw down every year while keeping the principal there to, uh, to generate income in perpetuity. The idea there being that this, this problem's not going to go away anytime soon. If we can do something long-term with it and get that money, uh, available for treatment and stuff. Um, Commissioner Jowzinski's worked very hard on this, uh, with a group, uh, in a committee, a work group, uh, came up with these bylaws. Kind of spells out everything, the purpose and function and planning responsibilities. Are the committees responsible to the Isabel County Board of Commissioners here and after referred to as board, shall provide input, advice and recommendations on the disbursement of Isabel County government revenues received as a result of the national opiate settlements. Um, so the committee will consist of, I believe, thirteen people. Uh, folks from, uh, providers, uh, folks from the trial court, uh, other folks in involved, uh, Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe, um, a couple of community members at large. Uh, but this, uh, committee will make a recommendation to, to the board on, uh, how to get these dollars, uh, available to, uh, groups for treatment and such.
Commissioner.
The Commissioner Moreno and myself, um, met this morning, uh, with the Isabel Substance Awareness Committee. And, uh, we're on the agenda, they asked about where we were and said, well, we'll be adapting those bylaws, uh, at tonight's meeting. So I think there is some excitement and a lot of these professionals that provide the services, uh, will be members of that committee. And, um, they're doing some advanced work already because I said, once the committee is formed, we still have to come up with the RFP for proposals. We need to have some kind of a judging basis that's fair and, uh, consistent. And the thing we've been doing some work on it. And I know we have Amy at MAC too, that's a, that's a resource. So I think, uh, once we seat the members on that, uh, group, they'll get work on it. And we'll make those, uh, allegations from the interest on the principal, uh, for services and it'll be well thought out.
Hey, any other discussion? So, yeah, a lot of work went into that and we do appreciate you working with that, Commissioner. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Jowzinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno.
Yeah.
Commissioner Swainy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Engler.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Weber, you want to take the next item, please?
Yes, uh, material recovery facility rate increase. Motion reads, move to approve the new rate increase for the Isabel County Material Recovery Facility as presented and outlined in the Fee-Based Services Transactions Table. Roll call. Support. Swainy.
It's been moved by Weber, supported by Swainy. Uh, we have, uh, Director Borton here and, uh, right-hand, uh, charity, so.
There we go. Um, yeah, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, as you can see, we've been looking at different things budget-wise, um, to try and see what we can do to increase the amount of funding coming into the department. And we're looking at fee services, uh, through, which would be yard waste, um, antifreeze, oil filters, oil, um, and things of that nature. Um, you can see off of the table on the second page of the staff report what the fees would go to. Um, as far as how they would be applied, uh, and in the rate that they are at now and the rate they would be increased to. As you can see, the difference in truck tire pricings, uh, car tire pricings, uh, one of the, one of the big things that comes to, you know, that jumps out is we're going from, uh, you know, twenty-five cents on an oil filter to a dollar and fifty cents. Um, you know, and it explains in the staff report that what we're trying to do is recover our cost off of that. And, uh, you know, so we've done enough research to know that, uh, a dollar fifty just barely covers the cost out of that, so. Um, yard waste is the same thing. Uh, you know, we have to look at the yard waste coming in and knowing that we're going to be, uh, having to have that material ground up, um, to be able to, uh, ship it out of the facility, so. So any questions on any of that?
Comments? Yes.
I just reiterate from, uh, the, the last Tuesday meeting that I keep an eye on, um, constituents are, you know, dropping off yard waste uh, and, uh, brush and things like that. I, I understand it very much, the, the need to, you know, maintain the fees, uh, to match costs coming out, especially, you know, oil and oil filters and antifreeze and truck tires and things that cost a lot to get out. Um, we are, with the yard waste, it's more esoteric. We're, we are, have labor costs for mulching up that waste so we can get it out of there. But, um, it's also a, a very strong staple of service that we give our community here, uh, especially, um, in Union Township and Mount Pleasant that I serve. So, um, I, I would ask that all the commissioners and, and, uh, Crystal watch and, and see what kind of feedback we have on the yard waste service and, and be willing to pull back if we need to. Because I think that's a service that we provide that's, you know, it's utilized very well because I utilize it and I see how you guys fill up that yard waste area and mulch and brush area. And then it gets taken away and filled up the next weekend, so, um, but it, it is one of those, uh, services that I, I'd hate to see, um, not utilized and, and therefore people are like leaving brush around and, and their yard looks more like mine.
I won't count on it, I won't comment on that, because I haven't ever seen your yard, so we'll leave that one alone. But I, I very much appreciate your comments and, and yes, if we get a lot of pushback, I, I will bring that feedback forward to the board, uh, for you guys to be able to reassess on that, uh, absolutely.
Commissioner Moreno.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that if people are concerned about the big jump, recycling department has always requested increases in the fees, but the previous administrators just said no.
Right, yes, fees haven't moved for a long time, for sure.
Okay.
Um, we, uh, at this point, uh, I think to make sure that my staff has enough time for this to, uh, uh, for us to make the adjustments in our computer systems, this will take effect, uh, Monday, the eleventh. So that gives us the rest of this week and this weekend to be able to make the, uh, com- computer changes to be able to take it effective, uh, on eight eleven.
Get my brush in.
Me too.
Okay, any more comments? Uh, seeing none, let's proceed to vote. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Moreno.
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Jowzinski.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Swainy, you want to hit the next one?
All right, item number four, motion reads, move to approve the request to increase processing fees for Isabel County Material Recovery Facility from sixty to sixty-five per ton for clean separated material with less than ten percent residual and eighty-five dollars to ninety per ton of single commodity material with ten percent or above residual effective October first, twenty twenty-five.
Support. It's been moved by Swainy, supported by Jowzinski, uh, discussion. Pretty similar to what our last one was, just on tipping fees.
Yeah, it, it's basically, it's a, you know, it's an increase in our tipping fees. Um, you know, we're trying to stay at a point where we're, uh, within bounds of, uh, surrounding area, uh, processors, uh, without getting too far out of alignment that, uh, we risk losing material to another area. Um, the, the five-dollar increase on each one of them, uh, as you can see, it does help, um, financially within the department itself.
Questions? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Jowzinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno.
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy. Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Engler. Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Commissioner Jowzinski, number five, you got the big one. Uh, Motorola Milestone ten. Motion reads, move to approve the payment of Motorola Mi- Milestone ten in the amount of three hu- of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents, uh, for the radio tower project. And we have our sheriff here to relieve.
Can you hear me?
Uh, support for that, please?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by, Jowzinski, supported by Hope, uh, discussion, we have the sheriff here.
Back to the last one. Um, we should be getting the last one here shortly, so it's the same as we've seen come through, um, these previous ones. We're getting close to being completed. Uh, my understanding is the subscriber stuff is all in, we're waiting for templates from the state able to disseminate those, uh, radios and equipment to the other agencies very soon.
Okay, it's, we've had these reports throughout the last couple of years and it's nice getting towards the end of it, so. Any more comments or questions? Commissioner Jowzinski.
Just refreshing to see this, uh, finally finished after many, many years of having to listen to complaints about changing over the eight hundred megahertz radios, uh, because everybody had their own systems and this will put us all on the same page and, and, uh, eliminate those, uh, spots that didn't have good coverage in the past, so congratulations, Sheriff.
Been a, a long process, but it's been a good process, so I'm happy to, so.
Okay, anymore? Uh, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Moreno.
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Jowzinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Engler.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, thank you, Sheriff. Okay, next up, item number six, Commissioner Moreno, you want to take that, please?
Sure. Prime Contract Change Order Number Thirty-seven. The motion reads, move to approve Prime Contract Change Order Number Thirty-seven with Clark Construction in the net additional amount of thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same.
Support. Swainy.
Been moved by Moreno, supported by Swainy. Uh, just, do you want to discuss this real quick?
Um, attached, you'll see this is the Prime Contract Change Order Thirty-seven with Clark Construction. The net total for all the changes incorporated at this time is an addition thirty of, of thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Of this amount, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty will be deducted from the buyout that has accumulated. And then an additional eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-nine will come from contingency. And this is the first time that contingency has been touched, uh, during this whole project.
Hey, comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I have to say with a project this big and complex, um, yeah, amazing job that, um, everyone's done, Sheriff's done with not, uh, dipping into contingency and, and making sure we're, um, on pace with um, our schedule and, and, uh, and costs.
Hey, any other comments, questions? Uh, seeing none, let's proceed to vote. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Jowzinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno.
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope. Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Engler.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, number seven, Commissioner Campbell.
Prime. Right. Number thirty-eight, move to approve Prime Contract Change Number Thirty-eight with Clark Construction in the net deduction amount of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and authorize the board chair sign the same.
Support. Been moved by Campbell, supported by Moreno. Uh, you want to discuss this one?
Sure. This is the final contract change order. And again, this is changing the contract with Clark. There's a net deduction of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four thousand. nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Of this amount, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and nine dollars will be deducted from the Clark Construction line. And then the remaining amount of contingency of seven hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and twenty-five will be reduced as well to get this contract closed out.
Deal. Any questions? Nice to get this off our table too. So, okay, if there's no more, uh, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope? Commissioner Weber? Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jowzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays. Motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Great, Commissioner Hope?
Yeah. Uh, Sixth District Regional Mutual Aid Agreement. Motion reads move to approve the Sixth District Regional Mutual Aid Agreement between the State of Michigan and Isabella County and authorize a board chairperson to sign the same.
Or Weber.
Been moved by Hope, supported by Weber. Uh, discussion?
So the Sixth District Regional Mutual Aid Agreement is designed to facilitate cooperation among the participating counties within the district, improve their ability to respond to large-scale emergencies and natural disasters. Uh, this mutual aid agreement ensures that personnel, equipment, and resources can be shared efficiently during critical incidents that exceed the capacity of any individual county. And by formalizing these collaborative efforts, the agreement aims to enhance public safety, streamline communication, and ensure coordinated response across jurisdictions. The agreement is reviewed annually to ensure compliance with state and federal guidelines and to address any operational or logistical updates needed based on recent experiences or emerging threats.
Comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's vote.
Commissioner Jowzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Yes.
Bell? Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays. Motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, item number nine, Commissioner Weber.
Item number nine, motion move to approve moving forward with the Isabella County assuming the role of administrative unit for the Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works and authorize the board chairman of the Isabella County Board of Commissioners to sign any and all related contracts and agreements that are currently in place between Saginaw County and Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works that have the assignment language in the contract. Roll call.
Been moved by Weber, supported by Swainy? A discussion, you want to?
Yeah, sure thing.
Play a little bit on it too, if you?
This has been a process that's been going on at least since April of 2023, uh, from the previous administration and board. This is, uh, for administrative unit is basically, we're going to be the acting fiduciary for five county, Michigan, Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works, which includes Saginaw Bay, Midland, and Grashit and Isabella. By having them come on board, it will allow us to collect indirect costs from them and a little over two hundred thousand dollars annually on this. As part of the administrative, uh, unit powers is that the signing of contracts. So I have in here is that there will be assignment language put in with the existing contracts that are between various entities and through the Great Lakes Bay, but as was signed by Saginaw County. So assignment language will be put in because there's over eighty of them. Most of them are service contracts. Like, for example, we have, um, there's Delta College for Early Apprentice Training and just various ones like that that they have. So this would just streamline the process. Any new contract that comes in front that's not already previously, um, uh, signed by Great Lakes Bay and or Saginaw County would come in front of the board through the normal process.
Commissioner.
So we've been, what, the two or three years on, on this particular project and, uh, we'll be reimbursed for all the direct costs, which is basically payroll and, and fringe benefit costs. Uh, I know the amount was two hundred thousand some, the indirects. That's really not profit to us because it's funny coming in to reimburse, reimburse us for our various.
Well, it's, they're paying their own costs. They're, it's, it's their own fund. So they're paying their own costs. It's just paying us back for some services that we are providing administratively.
Correct.
But we're not paying their payroll or anything like that. It's just reimbursing us for some of our costs.
We'll come out ahead as long as we don't have to add staff to, to do this. So.
And they have their own finance. They have their own, uh, accounting team in the Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works. So the, the effect, once we get rolling on the administrative side, will be minimal.
And this will be good for everybody because it, it will put more money available for, uh, works to have additional staff to provide services to the residents in the Fire County area.
They'll have at least an extra couple hundred thousand, um, to utilize for services.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jowzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays. Motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, item number ten, Commissioner Swainy.
All right, motion reads move to approve the joint transfer agreement between Saginaw County, Isabella County, and Municipal Employees Benefit Systems of Michigan that will cover the MERS Defined Benefit Plan, the MERS Defined Contribution Plan, and the MERS Healthcare Savings Plan as outlined in the attached joint transfer agreement and authorize the board chairperson to sign.
All right. Been moved by Swainy, supported by Jowzinski. Uh, similar to the item we just did. So.
It's similar, but with MERS, it requires a separate, um, board motion for approval on this one. So it does cover their defined benefit, the defined contribution, and healthcare savings plan in which their employees will just roll from that into this one. It'd be a separate unit. And just like we have on our MERS, separate units within the county, they'll be assessed their own costs. They're responsible for their own pension costs, their own contribution and everything, excuse me, and everything else as such. There's about twelve different amendments and agreements or that. Some were amendments made over the years, but you still have to approve each and every one of them. The Defined Benefit Plan, the otherwise known as the Pension Plan, has been closed since two thousand. Uh, so that is not an ongoing plan. They're all either in the Defined Contribution Plan as well. So the MERS requires a motion and, um, signature from the board chair for this.
Okay. I've seen nobody's hand raised, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jowzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Swainy?
Yes.
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays. Motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item number eleven, Commissioner Jowzinski.
Health insurance cost share structure. Motion reads move to approve the health insurance cost share structure with the Plan C employee share of zero percent of the total premium. Plan B employee cost share of seven point five percent of the total premium. And Plan A employee costs of fifteen percent of the total premium effective January first, two thousand twenty-six.
Support Swainy.
Been moved by Jowzinski, supported by Swainy. Discussion, you want to talk on this?
Sure. Uh, after having, you know, the, the insurance advisory group has been meeting on discussing different ways, when we got the renewal rates back, the amount was, uh, um, extremely high. And so we discussed different options in which to stabilize health insurance, not only now, but kind of moving forward. In the past, the HRA portion of this, it's a high deductible, high copay plan. So that's why C was free for the county. And it's the same plan, it's just that the county employees are paying the difference with the HRA. So it's still a very high deductible, high copay, copay plan. What we're doing now is that we're just coming to a straight percentage where it covers all the HRA and it's starting to cover a little bit of the insurance cost as well. So we can't just keep on offering that insurance without any additional amounts going in. So it just kind of stabilizes it, uh, moving forward towards the future. And so we're looking at about a savings of a hundred and twelve thousand for fiscal year twenty-six if the board approves these new rates. This will take effect in January and this will give the employees plenty of time to research their options. We, uh, are, while the insurance committee and anybody involved with that, we're going to do, try to get more education out to the employees to talk about how to maybe use your flex benefit plans, pre-tax, to utilize some of that for this to where maybe you don't have to do the A, maybe B is more practical and stuff like that. So we're trying to do a little bit more of an educational outreach this time and making sure that the, uh, employees are informed of what's the best plan for them. Some may want to pay up just because they don't want to have to deal with any of the bills and stuff. Some may want to do the flex plan, but it's all up to them.
And the total cost is pretty close to five hundred thousand.
The total increase before this was five hundred thousand dollars countywide, not just general fine, but countywide was five hundred thousand. There was a thirteen point two five percent increase for the insurance. So this just helps, helps getting it stabilized for the future.
Okay, any more questions?
Just wanted to clarify, we're not, uh, saving a hundred and twelve thousand. We're saving a hundred and twelve off the increase of the county's premium for the year. I wouldn't want employees to think that we're benefiting, we're benefiting at their expense. We're still putting in a new, new chunk of money.
Yes, we're still paying a large chunk, yes.
Kind of, it softens the blow from the increase a little bit.
Okay, any more comments? Uh, Clerk?
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber? Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jowzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays. Motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, item number twelve, Commissioner Moreno, you want to pick that one up?
Sure. Bank reconciliation policy number four one eight. Motion reads move to approve the adoption of bank reconciliation policy number four one eight to strengthen internal controls, improve financially, financial accountability, and address repeated audit recommendations.
Support.
It's been moved by Moreno, supported by Swainy. This is, you want to?
And today we have Finance Director Whitner. If she would like to come up and discuss these both since, uh, she had to leave before the last meeting. So that way you can hear her explanation of these policies or answer any questions. Thank you for coming on. Kind of.
I saw a new policy, but kind of an action sheet as we correct these, we're going to bring these on and, and then we'll discuss.
There wasn't a formal policy for this before, correct? This is a new, new policy? This is, no.
Oh, this didn't come from the audit though.
This is an automatic recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant. It's basically when recommendations from the audit, we're going to bring them forward and, uh, check them off as we correct them. So.
Yep, you're exactly right. There are internal control recommendations from our, our last, uh, financial audit we had and, um, opportunities for strengthening internal controls. Uh, so the bank reconciliations, um, all bank reconciliations except for the common account, which is our biggest account, uh, were being done in BSNA. That one was being done on a spreadsheet separately just because I think it was so complex. Uh, they had, uh, asked us, you know, you should probably have a formal policy regarding bank recs, do them all in BSNA. Um, and we can still run that spreadsheet separately on the side as long as they reconcile. Uh, that change was made come October first. So we're all set for this year. Just wanted to let you folks know that, um, you know, we're on the right track there fixing that. Um, we'll have this bank reconciliation policy on file now that we can provide to the auditor. So again, an opportunity to improve and, um, I believe this was a repeat. I believe this was on your audit the prior year. Uh, so I just want to make sure we take care of these items.
Okay, questions? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Jowzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy? Commissioner Hope? Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays. Motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and the last item, uh, Commissioner Campbell, you want to take that?
Vendor approval policy number four one nine. Move to approve the adoption of vendor approval of policy number four one nine to address recurring audit comments and enhance consistency, transparency, and internal controls in the procurement and vendor management process. Roll call.
Support.
It's been moved by Campbell, supported by Moreno.
The, the bank reconciliation policy, again, uh, auditors had, uh, recommended we have a vendor policy. This will help us take care of their main concern. Last year at the end of our audit was, um, at what point do we take a look at the vendors that are on our, uh, vendor list and make them inactive if they've been on there, say, two, three years or something and haven't been used? We'd well inactivate those vendors. So this policy covers that. It also covers much more than what the auditors recommended we have too. It helps us define a vendor. It helps us define, uh, the different types of vendors, what the procedure is for, um, establishing a new vendor. Um, we have some new vendor forms that will be filled out. Um, W9s being collected right at the beginning so that vendor isn't paid until that's on file. Um, that's just going to help us out all the better for the, uh, work comp audit, which deals with ten ninety-nines and will help us with our fiscal audit. So, um, again, just repeat things that we want to make sure that we're, we're taking care of now, nipping it in the bud and moving forward in the right direction. Uh, also wanted to mention that, um, they had also asked about, um, a, a formal information technology security and vendor policy, uh, vendor policy we just dealt with. That IT policy has been through legal, I believe. I think that's coming before you right away. We'll have that one taken care of also. Um, they had also mentioned, um, a stale check slash void check policy. Um, I just wanted to let the board know that our treasurer uses the state treasurer's policy. Uh, we didn't have that on file to hand over to the auditors. Otherwise, I believe if had we had that on hand, that wouldn't even have been mentioned in here. Uh, so, um, our treasurer does go by the state treasurer's policy and I'm sure that will be acceptable by, you know, our auditors. Um, so that one is being covered as well. And the last one that, uh, we're working on is the post-closure landfill liability. Uh, auditors would like to see something that lets them know that the amount of the liability we're showing at the end of the year is a valid amount. It's accurate. That is what they, we foresee it going to, uh, take to, to monitor that landfill. Uh, so we'll be working with the, uh, company that we contract with, WSP. They'll, they're the ones who do our monitoring and our testing. They'll, um, help us come up with a report at the end of the year to verify that liability. That one will be all set too. So just wanted to let the board know we're, we're doing good on, uh, taking care of these things that were, that were mentioned that, uh, we could do better on and improve on.
Commissioner.
Chris, I appreciate the, uh, definition for vendor.
Yes.
I know it's kind of, it's kind of broad, but, uh, do we have any vendors that we don't have a written agreement with in terms of a sales agreement or purchase agreement?
More, more that we don't have than we do. We wouldn't have an agreement, for example, to do business with, uh, to go to a local parts store. We don't have an agreement with them. Uh, we don't have an agreement with, um, I'm just, a lot of the vendors, we don't, we, there, there's.
So if an employee wanted to go to, uh, let's say, an auto parts store, uh, and they just wanted to, and the store is willing to make a sale based on, uh, uh, payment by the county, and there's not a written agreement, that's, that's fine.
No, there's not. There wouldn't be, no.
Are vendors all contractors, uh, paid under the contractual, uh, charitable accounts or?
There's a difference between, um, well, vendor is someone who either provides goods or services to us, right? So a vendor can be a subcontractor or it can just be a store. It can be a person. It, you know, there's a broad.
Thank you.
Contractor receives a ten ninety-nine from us. If, if that's, if that helps you understand that, if we're, if we're contracting with an independent contractor.
Correct.
Would have a, uh, they would be eligible for a ten ninety-nine if they reach anything six hundred and above. And we have a W9 at the point that they become, uh, a vendor for us. So we already have their social security and, uh, federal ID number.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Everybody else? I have a question. Oh, Commissioner, um, do you, is there a period inactive list after seven years? If there's no inactive on the vendor, do they come off the list?
Yes, our plan going forward with this is to review them every year towards the end of our fiscal Yes, our plan going forward with this is to review them every year towards the end of our fiscal year and take a look. And if there's been no activity for a year, year and a half, make them inactive. There is also procedure in place with this vendor policy that, for example, a vendor becomes inactive. We haven't used them for, say, a year, year and a half. If a department wants to use them again, they just simply fill out the paperwork again. We treat them as if they're a new vendor, gather all new paperwork, enter that in the system. That way we make sure that we have all that vendor's current information.
Just so there's any lapse in like insurance or something like that on your insurance, okay. Okay, any more questions? Seena, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Marino.
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Jowzinski. Commissioner Engler.
Yes.
Seven I, zero Nays. Motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, it's the business part of the meeting today. We have no governmental affairs. Administrator Controller, would you like any comments?
Not tonight. See, next Tuesday.
Okay, no unfinished business. We have no new business. As we talked about earlier, we'll open this up for general public comment. We'll open up the mic if you need for, and then after this, we will clear the room because we have to go into closed-door session. So please. Yeah, just need to sign. Okay, yep, you're all set then.
My resident chipwatt ownership. I'd like to address the Isabella County Commissioners, all seven of you. Brian Smith Administrator, which I have a lot of faith in. Public comments, I'm going to engage openly. We need, on recycling center, do we need it or want it? Yes, we need it here in Isabella County. And I approve all the rates. It's a user fee if you use it. I've used it for many, many years. I've talked to people out there. They say they don't want people coming in north, south, east and west, bringing their big trucks in. We have enough traffic, controlled as it is. We got to come in here for the jail, casino, outdoor adventures. That's another one. All the time. They're going to be hauling in tons of waste for recycled materials. Some of it's going to be organic materials. That's going to affect their air quality in our county. There's going to be solid waste, ouch. What's that going to do? Invite rats, mice, environments of all sorts? And they want to bring in the pods. We don't need pods. We just need to stand alone on our own. Jerry there said, well, the state mandates it. Yes, the mandate, it doesn't mandate a bod. It mandates each county would be on its own. Clare County's got a lot of open ground, so is Mount Con County. And I got here. We, we need a chance to vote. It seemed like we're getting left out of the voting thing now. It seemed like, like the jail. We didn't get to vote on the jail. Now, according to what they see, we're not going to vote on the recovery facility. Well, that's not right. That's not democracy. That's not government by the people. You represent the people. I know I'm only one person here to be represented tonight, but there's many of us out there that feel the same way. We want to vote on big ticket items like buildings and stuff like that. And I don't know how much money you got left in the kitty, but it sounds to me like you guys are going broke. That was mentioned, I think, in the paper a while back. And the old county building looks pretty sad. Remember, Commissioners? Guys are the one that put in that position. And I'd put a cap on Morton's expenditures too. One looks like he had a pretty elaborate mono, stuff that he wanted to put in there. Lot of meetings, motels, food, gas expenses, travel expenses and everything else. I put a cap on him like they did with you, Jim, when you got out of, out of rounds, when he was, they shut you down a little bit too. Just look at the data, look at the facts. Just keep thinking about the people you represent and what they want, not just what seven people want. That's all I got to say. I say we need to vote on that recycling center unless you guys turn it down. And I think most of us don't want it. I've talked to a lot of people out there where we recycle too, and they don't want it. It's ordinary people. So that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mic still open? Any other public comments? Hey, is there anybody online or on the phone at this time? At this time, I don't see anybody coming forward, so I will close the public comment. At this time, I'd like to take a motion to go into closed session for negotiations. Yes. Commissioner Swainy?
Do you want to read the mo, the motion?
Yes.
Motion reads move to a session to discuss with our attorney, trial and/or settlement strategy in the tax foreclosure litigation, including the pending lawsuit of Thomas Fox ITL versus Saginaw County, case number 1:19CV11887 pursuant to MCL 15.268E. Because discussion on the open record will have detrimental financial effect on litigation or settlement position of Isabella County and also to discuss material exempt from disclosure under the attorney privilege, MCL 15.431G pursuant to MCL 15.268H.
Support. Been moved by Swainy, supported by Jowzinski, that we enter into closed-door session. We'll wait for the room to clear out.
Got to vote.
They don't have to clear until we.
Commissioner Jowzinski. Commissioner Marino.
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy. Commissioner Hope. Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Engler. Seven I, zero Nays. Motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
I would just remind everybody to shut your microphones off.
Thank you all for attending late individual sessions.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jalzinski?
Yes.
Seven eight zero may's motion passed, Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Okay, let's get back to the meeting.
On audio. I'm just joining.
I move to approve the proposed settlement and inter-county agreement in the Fox, Thomas Fox, at L versus Sagino County at L case.
Support.
It's been moved by Jalzinski, supported by Marino. Any more discussion needed? Proceed the vote of roll call please.
Commissioner Weber?
Yeah.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jalzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Marino?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven eight zero may's motion passed, Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, last item of business is any announcements. Does any commissioners have any announcements? You didn't make it to Beale City this weekend, you gotta wait fifty more years, so.
Man, I'm not gonna love that much longer.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion. Been moved by Weber, supported by by Jalzinski, all in favor of ending the meeting, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye.